Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's have the stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every team just as for all.
Well, it's nice to see so many people in the audience on this beautiful summer day. A little warm, but it's cool in here. I guess at this point, we would start with our staff report. Oh, wait, no, roll call. Sorry.
Commissioner Aquila.
Here.
Commissioner Mazzoni.
Here.
Commissioner Palmer.
Here.
Commissioner Parryam.
Present.
And Chair Zinda.
Here I am. Do we want the staff report? Or should we just go and ask if anyone has a non-agenda public? You want to do that first? Okay, does anyone here have any public comment that is not on the agenda tonight that they would like to express before we start the proceedings? No? Are there any conflicts of interest with anything going on? I think then now would be a good time for the staff report.
Hello, Monica and Honorable Planning Commissioners. First thing I want to do is I want to introduce Ryan Reed. He's sitting there. He is outside council the city contracted with for the purpose of developing this or taking a draft development agreement and making it into its final form. And he is very knowledgeable in development agreements and that process. So a lot of your questions will probably be directed towards him. My role in this whole thing basically is to just kind of, the way I'm looking at this is I'm introducing what a development agreement is because it's kind of confusing. It's really a contract. It's passed like a zoning amendment. And also, I'm here to talk about what the planning commission's action is. Basically, if you've read the eight pages of staff report, you kind of got that, that it was mostly introductory, a little bit about the agreement itself and how it applies to the government code and how our action tonight is or is not related to the project itself, which is still a conceptual project at this time. And also, there were just two instructions on, you know, how to pass the resolution that's attached. So they're all, and also, as usual, sometimes I have some typos in the staff report and I just want to go over those for the record so we could change that stuff. In the title section, the applicant is actually the Shasta Jefferson Growth Business Incorporated. So I left out the word Shasta. And at the bottom of the, oops. Yeah, it appears that somehow a category of use was included, but without permit type in the project description. I believe the applicant will be able to clear that up. I don't have any, any actually what to change that to. Also, this doesn't really include retail sales of cannabis, this permit. In the, one of the previous drafts, it did make mention to that, but apparently on the final draft, that was taken out. Down at page two, second paragraph, basically, there's just a kind of a word that's not completely clear. So it says, there's a word apply. I would say construct or develop on that. It's down at the bottom. It's basically, the paragraph is really just a thing that's introductory to what a development agreement does. And the word apply just seems a little out of place, kind of redundant even. Okay, in the third paragraph, again, no retail sales is with this agreement. Page three, item number six, basically, a comment is that, do we need to describe what those actions may include? I say, no, not there. They're all over the staff report. And that list of bullet points is basically tying the requirements of a development agreement as stated in the government code to the subject development agreement and comments on what that is. So also, page three, second paragraph, when we say subject to approval by the, we're clarifying here what the subsequent actions are. And the actual project itself is a, going to have to come later, and that's a PUD application, and all that will be subject to CEQA. But when I say subject to approval by PC and council, really what that kind of means is we have two public hearings and that there will be subsequent hearings in front of this board to process the PUD application and most likely an environmental impact report.
Nobody's done an environmental impact report on that yet?
Not yet. Well, there's no project yet. What, see, now I'll get to the staff report.
What about the project we approved a while back?
Which one?
The first one they were going to do.
That was a design.
And that was an architectural design.
That was just for the design and the build.
That's a done deal. We've done that one. This is different.
Are they building it already?
I don't know, but can, I should just get to the staff report. Okay, basically, a development agreement is a voluntary contract between the city of Weed and a person who has legal or equitable title and a subject property within the city limits. They detail the obligations of both parties in specifying the standards and conditions that will govern development of the property. Although the agreements are voluntary, once they made, they are binding and they are legal agreements. Essentially, development agreements are contracts negotiated between project proponents and public agencies that govern land uses that may be allowed on a particular project. They must be consistent with the local planning policies formulated by the legislative body, meaning the general plan, and consistent with any applicable specific plan. Because development agreements are themselves ordinances, they may supersede existing land use regulations as long as they are consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan. So as a result, they can afford the city and project proponent greater latitude concerning allowable land uses in a particular instance. Basically, it's, development agreements kind of, it's like a thing where they kind of freeze the, on a project that's going to take a long time to construct or even get financing for. A development agreement essentially says, okay, we're going to freeze the regulations at this time and we're not going to come, we sign this agreement and we're agreeing at a certain point in time, a certain term, 15 years typically, we will not change the rules right off from on you and all of a sudden make your project illegal. Or, on the other hand, sometimes you promulgate land uses that necessarily aren't in the code and you agree to do, or to allow that. I think I will, maybe, perhaps the city, the outside council will be able to articulate that better, but that's really what it is. Like, let's say you have a subdivision that's going to be phased out and it's going to be a long project. Well, you want to, as a developer, you don't want to, you're putting a lot of funding and financing into the project and you don't want the city to all of a sudden say, oh, no, those kind of subdivisions are now illegal, so you can't finish the last two phases of your project, let's say. That's just kind of a hypothetical situation. But we have our own here, terms of that are clearly in there. So basically, government code section 65865.2 states that a development agreement shall specify the following: the duration of the agreement, the proposed permitted uses of the property, or proposed discretionary actions such as the PUD, the density or intensity of use, the maximum height and size of proposed buildings, provisions for reservation or dedication of land for public purposes, may include conditions, terms, restrictions, and requirements for subsequent discretionary actions, provided that such conditions, terms, and restrictions shall not prevent development of land or uses of the density and intensity set forth in the agreement. Also, agreement may provide that construction shall be commenced within a specified time and that the project or any phase thereof be completed within a specific time. The agreement may also include terms and condition related to applicant financing of necessary public facilities and subsequent reimbursement over time. The attached development agreement does contain all those necessary items as per the government code. So entering into this agreement will not result in the development project being constructed. The development project is still subject to public hearings by the planning commission and approval, final approval by city council. And that's, those terms are in the agreement quite clearly. So we have in our development agreement, we have the recitals. It is common to include recitals typically following the first paragraph of the agreement. These identify the parties and also certain other terms. They also identify other discretionary land use approvals required by the project. For example, in this case, we need an approval of a planned unit development and environmental impact report. And whether those approvals have previously occurred or whether, or will occur simultaneously. In this case, the recital is provided a description of the property. The developer has an interest in developing and follows with brief description of the activity proposed and refers to appropriate exhibits in the agreement. The recital is then described the concept of appellation of origin designation. Finally, the reason the city and developer wish to enter the agreement is provided. So essentially, we have the project description. Since the zoning code is silent on expressly regulating the cannabis industry, it does not prohibit the activity nor is it expressly allowed. The planning commission has approved a design review for a cannabis processing and distribution facility as well as a use permit for a limited size growing, otherwise known as a microbusiness. The project is described in detail in exhibits B and C of the document. The proposed project, subject to the agreement, is essentially to be able to submit application review for review and decision on a PUD that would allow a vertically integrated cannabis supply company with cultivation up to processing and distribution. Specific activity will include nursery, cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. I would say see the attached four details. And also, I'm pretty sure that the project applicant, the developer, will be able to fill you in on all sorts of details about the project description. Essentially, what an agreement comes down to are obligations by the developer and obligations by the city. In this section, we have obligations such as, number one, the developer is to file up applications for future discretionary actions, a zoning amendment, and certification of an EIR. Complete all necessary environmental analysis pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. This will include EIRs. Apply for and receive all necessarily, I would have to add state licenses and permits or other, you know, of course, building permits and our process. Developer shall submit, shall submit an application to Cal Cannabis Appellation Project pursuant to Business Professions Code 26063. Diligent efforts to provide employment for qualified local residents by conducting job fair. Developer pays minimum hourly wage of $20 per hour. Apply good management practice, pay all taxes and regulatory fees. City is obligated by signing this agreement, is allowed to use property as described as provided in the terms of the agreement. Now, that's the important part. The key word there is under the terms of the agreement. The terms of the agreement include getting approval for, final, ultimate approval for a zoning code amendment to a PUD. So essentially, though, the land uses described in the project will be frozen and developer has the right to submit those applications for the PUD, which will include an EIR. We also require that the agreement states that the city has followed the appropriate processes and the agreement is consistent with the general plan. We're obligated to make that call. The agreement will be removed, reviewed annually. The document also includes a section on termination of the agreement. So basically, in this thing, we pretty much should probably start talking about this in terms of it being a zoning code amendment. I would say the first and foremost thing that we need to make sure that we're realizing is that we have general plan consistency. Although the project development applications will be reviewed at a later date, the content of the agreement must show consistency with the general plan. Economic development is a primary concern to Weed residents. Community outreach has revealed that residents are determined to stimulate economic growth in core areas of the city, attract and retain well-paying jobs, and develop sustainable industries that will foster increased income and revenue for the city. The main goals of the preferred growth scenario aim to capture the community's vision for economic growth by attracting investors in anchor industries, promoting tourism, and reinvigorating key corridors throughout the city. This project, if, when it's applied for, will be located in Key Growth Area 6. That's the South Weed area. The land use designation is consistent with the general plan designation of commercial. The land uses in Key Growth Area 6 are primarily commercial at this time, and I would say it's deemed service commercial. That's kind of the growth area. The CM zone includes a C2 and C1 uses. The land use designation is commercial. CM is a light industry-related classification. Well, no, I'm sorry. The land use designation is CM or light manufacturing. CM is a light industry-related classification, but the majority of the allowed uses are those permitted in C1 and C2 areas. Now, purely industrial property is zoned M. This would be more of a lighter industrial. Preferred growth scenario emphasizes South Weed as the city's service commercial center by allocating land to commercial and light industrial, to industrial uses that can create jobs and generate revenue for the city. The preferred growth scenario targets creation of nearly 800 new jobs. So just to highlight some of the policies, we have goal one is a balanced and diversified set of land uses. And that means to, objective to meet that goal is distribute the amount of commercial land uses within key growth areas. And it's our policy to promote a diverse mix of commercial development in Angel Valley, Creekside Village, Historic Downtown, North-South Weed Corridor, Bel Air, and South Weed. Develop, and also to develop economic base including a range of retail, service, health, education, and tourist center activities. And also to economic development element says to approve development proposals suitable for key growth areas with specific functional uses, including commercial, retail, service, and applicable industry. Zoning code, the property is zoned CM. CM zone allows for light industrial as well as the uses in C1 and C2. Public health and safety. The project is intended to provide meaningful employment to the immediate region and promote the region through the appellation concept. There's probably going to be a better discussion about what an appellation concept is from the applicant. Licenses will be required to comply with all rules, regulations governing the activities they are engaged in, including applicable regulations adopted by the Bureau of Cannabis Control and Food and Agriculture and Department of Public Health and Safety, as well as local This agreement will help both parties achieve meaningful goals. The zoning code is silent on the activity and such new forms of industry are known to produce jobs. The goals of the zoning code and general plan are orderly development of land and in turn create jobs and contribute to general welfare of the city. Now, California Environmental Quality Act, this is the kind of tricky part for me. Development agreements are subject to CEQA. However, this particular agreement specifies that the agreement is contingent upon submitting applications for rezoning to PUD and certification of an EIR. As per agreement, developer is required to submit applications for discretionary actions within a certain amount of time, recommending that the council entered into this agreement does not have an impact on the physical environment. This agreement has embedded subsequent discretionary action that will require public hearings and preparations of further documentation. For the purposes of this decision, however, staff is recommending that entering into the development agreement, which terms include specific descriptions of future actions, will not have an impact on the environment. Therefore, this action is not considered a project that will impact the environment. All terms of the agreement are expressly contingent upon future CEQA approval and specifically indicate that the PUD application and CEQA could result in project being denied. So tonight, your action. Planning commission, the development is a legislative act and is approved by ordinance as a subject to referendum. That's as per government code section 65867.5 subsection A, right in, right there in the government code. So with that, the process here is done, provided in chapter 18.6, 36 of the municipal code. We're being asked to make a recommendation to the council whether to enter into this development agreement with the terms as specified in the document. This is not an approval of the future PUD application that will be submitted. The development project will be proposed at a later date with timing specified in the agreement, which includes application for the PUD as per chapter 18.20 of the Weed municipal code. So the following is basically the scope of the review. Amendments to the standards which include additions of words, phrases, this is 18.36 of the municipal code, by the way. Amendments to the standards which include additions of words, phrases, sentences, and sections, or the change of elimination of such shall be approved only if the amendment is consistent with the general plan of the city and specified plans, and specific plans of the area. And the amendment shall promote public health, safety, and welfare and will better serve the goals and purposes of this title, meaning the zone code. We went into a pretty long discussion about the general plan and public health and safety. Basically, what usually that means is following the laws that we've adopted for the purpose of public health and safety. After conducting a notice public hearing on any proposed zone change or code amendment, the planning commission, based on the evidence presented, shall take one of the following courses of action. One, recommend to the city council that the request be granted or recommend to the city council that the rest, request be granted in part and denied in part, or recommend to the city council that the request be denied. Consider the, the recommendation is to consider the proposed development agreement and staff report and input from the developer in public. If the planning commission can support the findings set forth above and in chapter 18.36 of the municipal code, then the planning commission should recommend to the city council that they enter into the attached development agreement. If the planning commission cannot support those findings, then the planning commission should recommend that the city council deny the development agreement. That's my staff report.
That's it?
Thank you. It's a little long, I'm very sorry, but it's kind of an important night, you know?
Lot of information.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess now the public hearing is opened and we are looking forward to the presentation by the project proponent.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt for a moment? Due to COVID, we're only allowed 11 public in attendance. We are up to 13. They are spaced out okay. If you're comfortable with that, you may leave them. Otherwise, two would have to go out into the room.
I'm comfortable with it if everyone else is.
If any more come in, we're going to need them to go out, though.
I'm okay with it.
I also, for what it's, for what it's worth, I know that there's at least one or two members of the audience that had come to speak that have to leave in a timely fashion that's going to kind of cut their bill.
Speak into the microphone.
Sorry.
There's a couple of members of the audience who I know have time constraints, so I'm not sure if it is allowed within the confines of the public hearing to allow those folks to speak prior to me getting up and giving my spiel. Is that okay with you?
We would have to know who they are and.
Yeah, I believe they have submitted their cards.
Which ones are they? I know Nathan. And I'm not, does anyone else really need to dip? Jim Taylor? So then we'd be 11.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. My name is Nathan Thill. I live in Weed over by the brewery. I've been a businessman in the community for about 20 years, not quite, about 18 years. And I had a multitude of companies that I ran and generated revenue from outside the county and would bring it in. And the reason I bring that up is just to share a little bit about my background of how I know Ray and Greg. I sold my company beginning of 2018 and doing some consulting on the side. I was able to generate around a million dollars of revenue in jobs a year and approximately $5 million of gross revenue in a year. I had three companies in three different states, and it was around the wool business. And it's very similar to the business model that Ray is presenting today, where you have raw goods, you have manufacturing, and then you have retailer or some combination of those things. So I find myself familiar with the basics of what they want to do. And the three things I want to touch upon with working with them on a, let's say, semi-intimate level of knowing how they plan to go about that and be successful, the main thing that jumped out at me was their integrity. I got involved, mentioned something to Ken that I, you know, I'm available to the community for any consulting and working with Ray and Greg, I could tell right away that their heart was in the right place and their community was very important to them. So that inspired me to work with them. The next thing is their intent. I noticed that there's a lot of roadblocks in this process, and here they are today. And I've been working with them for a couple of years, so I like to see that unwavering intent, and I just want to give them credit here today. And lastly, just on a human level, I think that their intelligence also comes through that they're the type of people that we are looking for as a community to understand all the different complexities, not only the paperwork and the spreadsheets and the money, but also the personalities and the pulse of the community. So with that said, thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and I just want to endorse their project here today. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Jim Taylor and I live at 810 Hillside Drive here in Weed. I am here mainly as a character witness for Ray. I'm neither an opponent nor do I, I'm in favor of the project. I don't know enough about the project to speak on it intelligently, but I've known Ray for probably five years, maybe a little bit more with our WCW see the water for the citizens of Weed, California. And Ray has brought, he's been invaluable to us in information and this type of thing. Very intelligent, and like I say, I am here just to speak on his behalf, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Now, do we get to hear Ray or?
I'm here to answer questions.
Where are we?
Yeah. So yeah, first and foremost, thank you guys for being here. Really, Phillips's microbusiness is a great example. You know, it has the potential to have, you know, 10, maybe 12 employees. We're talking about a project with the potential for 250 employees, and that's a substantial and marked difference. So we, we had a version that we had submitted in October of last year that. So, we had a version that we had submitted in October of last year that, again, due to Ron's departure, we were told that we had to wait for the new city manager to arrive, and so we have patiently waited for this very public hearing. And I'm just really happy to be here. It's the culmination of a lot of hard work, and I'm basically here to answer any questions you guys have.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, this business is shaped around the processing and distribution of cannabis.
Yeah, and the cultivation.
And the cultivation.
Yeah, so...
Will any of your energy be spent on research and...
Oh, absolutely.
About other uses for cannabis?
Yes.
There is so much out there that we're not seeing here in town, and I would love to see other ways of utilizing this product besides consumption.
No, absolutely. And I mean, to that effect, it's not really the purview of this public hearing or even this project, but our company has another subsidiary that's working on a hemp building materials factory on Tulley Lake. So, we are very much, you know, the Shasta-Jefferson Growth Businesses is the parent company. It is on its whole a rather agnostic economic development firm. We've been asked to take a hand in a number of projects, not in the cannabis or hemp space, and we feel like we're bringing a team and a knowledge base and a set of skills that can be applied to lots of things within the community. And again, that was one of the reasons I was asked to chair our City Economic Development Committee along with Ms. Combsy Bowles. So, short answer, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I have something to ask.
Sure.
You had, we had a meeting here. I beg for everybody to just hear me, but back when you talked about your plans, I think it was in November 2018.
Yes, November of...
I asked you if you were gonna grow out there.
Yeah.
And you said no.
Right, not at that facility.
I asked if you were gonna grow at all out there, and you said no.
I believe I said that those plans were under consideration. At the time, I had discussed at some length...
I look back on the film.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess...
You can, you're more than welcome to.
Sure, sure, sure. And I apologize if that was not made clear, but...
That makes a big difference to me, because I go a lot by someone, what someone tells me.
Sure, and I apologize if I didn't make that clear. That was certainly not my intent, but at that time, the cultivation project and the reason that you saw that that portion of the project was on the advice of city manager, former city manager stock, was because that 3.28 acre piece that is across the street from these two was deemed to be exempt from SEQA due to its size and the fact that it didn't have any, what is the phrase, Keith? Different, like markedly different uses within a certain range. So, I am sincerely sorry if that is how it came across, but...
So, do you, are you leasing those? Do you have rights to all that land that's out there?
Yes, that is correct. Before Joe Gannon passed, yes, we actually just, well, when we came in front of you guys, it was right when the laws were changing. So, one of the reasons, and I heard you mention this, Commissioner Palmer, one of the reasons we haven't made a whole lot of progress on that first parcel is because when you, we were in front of you guys in November, we didn't actually get our state permits until August of the next year because there was such a backlog.
You bought the property again?
It's leased with an option to purchase.
You've been paying them every month?
Yep, sure. Yeah, it's a lease with an option. So, under the statute, under the government code statute, we actually have to execute on the purchase to be able to apply for the rezone. So, one of the underlying factors of this development agreement is this provides an assurance or a level of surety to strategic financial partners that we have the trust of the city to move forward with a project so long as we comply with the requisite processes of approval.
You don't believe it's kind of different to put a cannabis building around McDonald's, Burger King? See, the major money for this city, which I believe these people know is the motels. You knew that in Ashland, they sued them, they took the cannabis out around the motels? Holiday Express was moving out, Holiday Inn gave up. Did anybody do their homework because of cannabis smell? The smell only comes two months out of the year.
Sure.
But in doing so, you had your major tourist coming into Ashland. It was costing three and a half mil a year for the cannabis smell. Now he won't smell when he goes through on his motorcycle.
Well, I think that there's two really important things to note. First of all...
Not done yet.
Oh, sorry, please, go ahead.
So, you're gonna put that next to three motels, a McDonald's, a Burger King, a Taco Bell, and probably a Panda Express?
That would be great.
Yeah, they don't think so.
I mean...
So, we will lose one of them if they try to come in.
I think that it's also...
I agree, we want to put a multimillion dollar motel in Weed, which we make our income off of.
Sure.
The city council, the dope thing is 1%.
Well, the tax revenue model, actually, what we'd be looking at on a five and 10 and 15-year plan far outstrips the current TOT income.
No.
Yes, it is.
How much tax would you like to pay?
We've provided city manager Rundell along with Emily and the finance department.
How much tax?
I mean, it runs, it runs, when you look at all three tiers of taxation, both as the gross receipts tax, the cultivation square footage tax, as well as the remittance with the use of the city logo through the appellation, it gets up to seven figures.
Seven what?
I don't, I don't feel comfortable just quoting numbers.
I mean, you're talking 3%, 5%, 7% on the dollar? How much tax do you plan to pay the city, like sales tax? See, sales tax is a weird tax. We only get a certain percentage of it.
Right.
Motel tax, we get all of it.
So...
So, why our city didn't put a cannabis tax more than 1% is ridiculous. That is, I don't know where we came up with the 1%. I've been here for 40 years. I do run a business, and you guys have made me very dizzy. I've never towed so much or had so many, I'm out of tow trucks, I'm gonna hire more. We're losing the people that we need.
Okay.
And the stuff I'm towing is terrible. People live in their cars and everything else, and this was because of what you're doing. In the city of Weed, I believe it's a bad idea, there's no plus, everybody here knows it, but to put it next to our income, next to our wells, next to the only stream that has a certain endangered species trout in it, and nobody's gonna tell me it doesn't because I own it, it's ridiculous.
Yes, Bruce Schumaker has described this to me as well. We have a completely closed-loop cultivation model, so there is absolutely no seepage. This is not what you're used to dealing with in the Vista or what they allowed in Southern Oregon. These are from street view, effectively warehouse buildings.
See, it is.
They have very sophisticated air scrubbers on both the intake and the output, that there have been multiple county studies, particularly down in Central Coast, where they've gone out with odor measurers, and it's shown that the UV scrubbing is 99.9% effective.
Show me the air scrubber.
It's like a big box.
Show me the plan to wash. Show me the printout, show me how it works.
Sure.
Show me how much smell, and show me the hay fever it takes away from the people. It's every nose now, after my research, cannabis causes people the hay fever, 2% more problems. So, why don't you go ahead and give me a plan for the scrubber?
I actually have provided plans for those scrubbers.
Why don't we have?
That's a good question, but I mean, go ahead, please.
We're not approving the details of a project tonight. We're worried about whether they're gonna enter into a development agreement to allow these guys the right to submit an application later.
And that's what we're worried about with that to the people of Weed that voted just now. People of Weed voted not to let marijuana in Weed, to vote out.
Sir, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that's fundamentally accurate. I think that what you're describing is the vote that was under medical, and under medical, the regulations were effectively non-existent, and so, quite frankly...
You're not doing medical anymore? You're gonna have only mail plants?
No, no, we have both adult use and medical. What I'm saying is that that vote was under a prior regulatory regime, which did not have the robust health and safety protocols or public nuisance protocols that we now have to deal with under the new regulatory framework.
You know, I heard that too, so I took a drive up to a different place that had it in it, and please, don't get me wrong, because you're a little corporation, you opened up a bit eight months ago. I also checked it here. It's not much there. I'm kind of a businessman, I am, I really am. I deal in metal, and I deal in money, and I do have stock. So, I did my homework. You started your own corporation?
Yes, of course.
That's what you're using for a name, but it has no financial backing yet.
Yes, it does. That's...
Where's your financial money?
That's not really the purview of this conversation, and quite frankly, that's sort of...
I know I'm asking questions I shouldn't, and I apologize. I don't believe this belongs there. I don't believe it belongs next to our motels. I don't believe it belongs next to our restaurants to pay our bills.
Well...
I believe if we lose, we're losing what is making the income for the city.
And as I stated, in the documents that I've provided to the city manager, the numbers dwarf what South Weed currently proposes. In addition, by the way, and it's in those plans that you have, we have a two-acre strip that we are not building cannabis businesses on that are a multi-tenant strip mall. So, we are contributing to that bottom line as well. And in my conversations with Mr. Walkup, who, you know, was one of the folks that received a letter for this, he and I talk all the time, and he thinks that this is gonna be a boon for the RV park because, quite frankly, the cannabis tourism industry and what is becoming cannabis/wine country and also up to the 101 is booming. I mean, those bed and breakfasts that are attached to grows, they can't keep the space open because there's people from all around the country and world who have been advocates or consumers of cannabis that had lived under prohibition that now want to see what it is. And so, I think that, you know, the cannabis tourism piece really, really plays because if you look at the correlation between outdoor recreational tourism and cannabis consumption, there is a, there's a pretty clear correlation.
I believe cannabis is a thriving business.
Right.
I don't believe it belongs in Weed.
Well...
I'll be honest with you. I believe it's gonna go somewhere, it's gonna go somewhere where the monks did out in the desert where it doesn't bother anybody, or it's gonna go like Ashton did when they shipped it out of the area of the valley and sent it over into the other side of the valley, and it's gonna be like exit 99, if you go there, you have a casino, and the casino bought out the property, which you know this already, Rob, you did your homework, onto where the cannabis is being grown by the old truck place, and they bought it, closed it, so the smell wouldn't bother them. I believe it belongs, and it's gonna be, industry is gonna grow, and people make whatever, but it doesn't belong here.
I mean...
I'm letting you know how I feel.
I agree, agree with that. Not all of it, but some of it, as far as the agriculture, I just think that should be out in the county somewhere, so that's...
I would love that, and I have had conversations with supervisor top staff, and I mean, yes.
Yes, right.
The fact of the matter is, right now, there's a situation where going to an industrial zone within a city is really the only option. And if that provides a proof of concept for a larger project in the decades to come, I can only hope that my efforts will lend toward that outcome. But in the meantime, we have an opportunity to build out a several hundred-person job industry in what is otherwise land that I have to chase vagrants off of and that they almost started a fire in, like, a couple of weeks ago. We were putting up no trespassing signs because they ripped them down, and I had to call the PD because there's vagrants back there with a campfire. And I mean, so, when you talk about underutilized land resources, the land back down there in South Weed is a classic example of that. And Commissioner Palmer, I appreciate that your experience with cannabis thus far has been subpar, to say the least.
So far, haven't seen them keep their word.
Well, I look forward to illustrating that...
Change to how they want it to be once it passes.
Okay, well, I look forward to illustrating that we are...
My buddy did. My buddy Donnie is not little in cannabis business. He's not a joke.
I don't know who that is.
He is very large in it. And he has 16,000 acres, he has two processing plants, and he employs 82 people.
That sounds more like industrial hemp, but I...
By B, but he employs 82 people. He processes it legally. He has 82 people. How many people are you planning to employ?
It's, the conservative estimate would be somewhere between 200 and 250 once full buildout is accomplished, so that's five to seven years from now.
When are you gonna start, Ray?
Well, it was our intention, again, unfortunately, because the state permits didn't come through in July, there was some issues with getting the groundwork done on the first building, and then, quite frankly, as a result of COVID, we had a strategic financial partner back out. We are currently pursuing this development agreement very specifically because this is the type of assurance that the construction financiers want to see in order to expend seven figures to start the buildout. So, I mean, that's really what we're here to do, right? That's, I mean...
So, actually, what you're doing is you're getting permission to build something so you can put it out to investors and find out who wants to put the money in the building?
Unfortunately, we can't go get a bank loan, not yet. It's coming, but...
You're gonna find somebody that wants to do it.
Oh, there's, there are several interested parties.
But you're saying that you're looking for investors?
Yeah, there's several interested parties, but this is the type of assurance that they need to see to be comfortable with that, you know?
I agree that the property over there should be used for something I do.
Yeah.
I believe it'd be a nice, attractive supply. Put in a wonderful motel, maybe another one. You have a lot of going in across the street that they're worried about smell and lighting. It's not even in the ballpark where you're trying to put in.
Well...
And the vagrants you got over there, half of them are growing pot out there in the woods, and the rest...
That's, that's not true. That's, it's scrub land, that's, that's, that's not true, sir.
They're not growing out there?
Not to my knowledge. We've gone out there a bunch with Chief Mayberry. We've gone out there a bunch with Chief Mayberry, and we've gone out there with a number of deputies, and most of the folks that we find are just people, quote unquote, passing through, right? Just people passing through.
I owned the property on the far end for many, many years.
Oh, yeah, Bruce's old place, yeah. Your, excuse me, your old place now, Bruce's place.
I signed a contract with a fair, for a tree farm, and we can never develop that for 72 years.
Yeah.
Since I'm only 40 years old since I owned it, it still has 32 years, you can't go near the tree farm, right?
The, I mean, I don't know what the terms of the THP are, but yeah, sure.
It was a, it was a really, really good tax write-off. Of course, it was put into all of us if we put money in tree farm, we signed the property over for the tree farm, and then we got the write-off of grade to money. We did. And doing so, it covered the cost of the property. Gannon and Joe, I do know him, Morgan.
Of course, yes.
I know him very well, and he got the write-off. He stole the property and paid me taxes because he had the tree farm. You're not going into the tree farm, right?
No, it's not my intent. No. No, like I said, I mean, you know, the actual, and you have the site map in...
And you have the site map, unless, I'm off. Where you plan to build? You're planning to build Casey across from Pilot.
No, so immediately across from Pilot, along Vista, there is a two-acre lot that is not cannabis business oriented, that is just gonna be a multi-tenant retail strip.
So, it's gonna go towards Charlie Bird's old house?
Yes, correct.
Exactly, that's what I thought.
Yes, totally.
First Charlie's old house, right?
Yeah, which actually currently too is my employee's rent.
Yeah, when we voted to put in the gardens. Which have moved. Right? Because they wanted some free, free way.
I'd like to ask, on your manufacturing, what are you planning on manufacturing?
We're rather agnostic about it. I mean, quite frankly, there are a multitude of different consumer goods which are in high demand but in low production number. So, we have LOIs with some companies that do sublinguals, for instance, under the tongue, transdermal patches we're looking into, I mean, anything.
Are you talking about CBDs and THC?
Yeah, so...
Combination of both?
And absolutely. And so, the nursery that City Planner McKinley referenced, which was included as part of but didn't actually list out the permit type, our intent with that nursery permit is to breed very specifically one-to-one ratios, so half THC, half CBD, because that allows us the maximum flexibility both in manufacturing, and it also is one of those very high-demand categories that there simply isn't enough product for.
Well, I agree with you on that. I have no problem with the manufacturing, because I know there's a lot of elderly people around here that do take CBDs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they don't want to smoke it.
Right.
You know, whether it's for pain or, you know, whatever. I don't have anything, any problem with that. And I don't have any problem with outdoor grows on marijuana. But I do have a problem with outdoor grows on the south end.
So, just to be clear, this is not outdoor. These are going to look, and from street level...
I know they're gonna be in a greenhouse.
They're, well, but they're not traditional rolling-walled greenhouses, and that's one of the primary mechanisms by which we have mitigation of odor. So, they are rigid-walled greenhouses, environmentally-controlled greenhouses. The only thing that is reminiscent of a greenhouse is the fact that the roof is a clear roof with a blackout shade underneath. So, they are from street level, you're looking at it, you can't see the roof, they look like a warehouse building.
But during the summer, you're gonna have a lot of heat in there, and you're gonna have to exhaust that heat out.
Yeah, although...
And the smell's gonna come with it.
Well, no, so that's the UV scrubbers, which, and I do apologize, and I will totally send you guys the specs on those. AirSniper is a great company. It's a, it's a very common sort of air filtration scrubber.
National Air is a great company, and it does take out part, it bothers people except for the smell. The smell, they cannot get rid of.
So, I'm not sure what that technology is. The technology that I'm describing is UV scrubbing, which is, again.
It's what they used up there.
Okay.
I actually drove up there.
Okay.
And took the time and they cannot take out the smell. They can take out the part for the hay fever and everything else easily. It's gone. Filtered out like an air conditioning filter. They cannot, we need support. That's like saying a septic tank won't have smell come up because with scrubbers, it doesn't work.
I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from. All I can say is that the jurisdictions where odor mitigation has been a significant concern has mandated the use of these because of the scientific studies that indicate that there is an odor mitigation component as well as an air scrubber component. And, I mean, the fact of the matter is, and, and, you know, people were complaining about a smell coming from Shane's micro-business before he had plants in there. It was psychosomatic. People wanted to smell it.
Behind there that they got arrested. That was the people that were behind the city weed yard and the city weed yard still smells.
That had happened quite sometimes.
Nobody's got scrubbers in. Nobody followed it. The scrubbers aren't in Shane's place. The smell's still in the city weed. It's still, we build, you go there.
Yeah, I mean, it smells like diesel otherwise down in South Weed, which, you know.
It's definitely below the South Weed.
I also like the smell of diesel once in a while, but the fact of the matter is.
I used to have diesel a lot.
I know.
I had a diesel truck.
I know, man.
On the other hand, uh, it's illegal in this around.
Sure. And, and that, you know, and I guess one of the things that I really did have in the forefront of my mind for this, for this hearing is just to illustrate the fact that this is nothing like the inundated, illegal cultivation operations that are happening in the Chasta Vista. I have no sympathy for those people. They do not play by the rules, neither the rules of our industry as qualified operators in terms of good management practices, nor do they play by the rules and pay taxes or get permits. They have porta potties and trailers. This is not what we're talking about. And I think it's very important to make that distinction incredibly clear.
I understand that, but I think it's very important to understand. South Weed may not develop in my lifetime, but one day it will. And when it does, it's going to be more of an income for the city weed. And I'm sorry, what you're throwing out there is not.
I, I disagree and I think that I'm not, I don't under.
Great, sharp. One question, can I ask it? What's the average income off one motel, one motel six, that does last in the other for the city weed?
I can't comment on that one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me tell you, you're not.
Um, I, I think we're getting a little off of the topic at hand here.
My point is, it doesn't belong by the restaurant, I think. It belongs somewhere by itself. My apologies, but that is.
Brian, I, I do think you've made your point.
The other thing is, it's multiple. No, dude, don't, dude, sorry, it's a board game, Brian. I, I appreciate the, the frank conversation. I am into candor and like, this is how things get hashed out, right? You, you know, that's it. So, don't, don't apologize, please.
I've, uh, had a weird year so far because of cannabis and weed. Sad one would be the woman, uh.
We also have a lot of other people who have views that want to express them tonight.
That's a good point, let her rip.
Yeah, okay. So, anyone else? Any other questions from the commission? Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I mean, only that. We look forward to the opportunity to provide a, a substantial amount of the type of living wage jobs that are called for in the general plan. And as per city staff's report, the usage under the light industrial zoning is completely appropriate. I mean, I understand that it is a little close for comfort for you, but there are literally six lots separating our operation and the nearest restaurant. And quite frankly, on the north end of the top lot, as you see on that screen, we are going to be putting in more restaurants and retail. So, I just think that those sorts of concerns are really the purview of the business operator and, and the neighboring business operators. So, you know, I know that Rodney thinks this is a great idea. I know that Gregory Walkup thinks this is a good idea. Joe Gannon, before he passed, thought this was a good idea, as his did partners. And if those people that own those businesses thought it was a bad idea, they received a notice in the mail that this public hearing was happening and I don't see any of them here.
Walkup was supposed to have a RV, whatever, the, you know, can.
He's been saying it forever, right? Yeah, I, I get it, I get it.
And Mr. Gannon offered to make me a deal on the property if I put it, it was called a shredder.
Uh, excuse me?
Sure, yeah, I could have bought the property from Mr. Gannon to put it in a shredder.
A shredder?
Shredder, for metal.
Oh, word, okay. All right, I didn't, I'm. For a moment, I was, I thought you were talking like chipping trees for a minute. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Darrell.
Regarding your proposal here. So, um, a, as I understand it from the reading in the staff report, that this is a, a hearing to decide on allowing, you know, basically, uh, what was said is certainty for investment in the future, but this doesn't guarantee any project.
No.
Um, to take place, just that, you know, basically, the, this moment in time, as far as regulation is concerned, is kind of frozen so that you have the same rules in three years or five years to play by, um, you know, in case things change. And, and from an investment standpoint, that's understandable. So, I'm interested in, in, add a couple of questions here in regards to the development here. So, you're looking at building this, uh, I mean, it looks like a boardwalk in the drawing, but like this, this north por- portion here for other businesses.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, are these, are you have plans to sublease these to other companies?
Yes.
Or is this something you plan on, on, you know, Chasta, Jefferson Economic Development managing that directly?
It is going to be spun off as a subsidiary and we are in talks with a couple of nationwide commercial real estate development firms that have, uh, looked at the data analytics provided for the highway traffic and are very interested in taking that piece of it off our hands, quite frankly.
So, um, so that's very, very interesting. Now, one of the things that in this, has come up in this discussion, as well as I've, I've been solicited by different groups at my house or, or in the street about the, the vagrancy issues in South Weed over the last couple of years. Now, I understand that from the other things we've reviewed over the years regarding, you know, cannabis industry businesses, there's a lot of security involved. Uh, collaboration with the PD, um, the states, uh, different requirements was really quite stringent.
Yes.
From what I've read. How does that play into both before development and then say i- if there were developments in the future? How would that play into that, that vagrancy issue? Is it, is there room in that security plan to, to mitigate those issues or, um, is there a concern from, from the, yourself or the public that that could increase?
So, actually, uh, Chief Mayberry seems to think that this will be a deterrent for vagrants, mostly because the fact that that land, which is now currently unoccupied and has, you know, eight-foot-tall scrub grass that you can pretty easily hide a human being in, will be fenced off as per the state guidelines. Uh, likewise, Mr. Walkup seems to think that this will, uh, stop folks from coming in off of Black Butte and given that Vista Drive is blocked off, it's very difficult to get a vehicle down there and the gates have been put in on the railroad access down by Charlie's old house. And, um, so, no, I think that, I think that this is a good, this is a great starting point to, to mitigate that. Um, you know, the security plan that we have drafted up, uh, was at one point reviewed by then Sergeant Mayberry prior to him being chief and, uh, it was a integral component in all of the regulatory advisory committee meetings. And as you said, the state regs are really stringent. We have to have video cameras. You know, part of the reason that we found the folks with the campfire was because, uh, the PD asked me to go put no trespassing signs because they had ripped them down and without no trespassing signs, they don't actually have grounds to write a ticket. And so, we went and we brought a ladder and went, you know, 12-foot up in a tree and put up no trespassing signs so that the PD had more leeway to do that. And, um, the only thing that's really going to root out that vagrancy issue is the establishment of businesses. I mean, clearing off the land might help a little bit, but they're just going to duck back farther into the trees. And so, you know, I'm in, I'm in close contact with Gregory about it. I'm in close contact with Bruce Shoemaker from the Black Butte Center for Railroad Culture about it. I've spoken to Paige Bigport about it. I mean, you know, it's, all the South Weed business owners are aware that it is an issue. And unfortunately, you know, short of changing one of the community service officers to someone who can write tickets or, or bringing on more police, it's a very difficult problem to solve. And I guess part of what I'm looking forward to doing is to provide revenue stream to the city capable of engaging public service to meet those needs. And I mean, you know, I, I don't, it, I'm, I'm sorry that the numbers were not in your staff packet, but we did provide projection numbers to the city for the basically three tiers of revenue projection. And very similar to the TOT tax, the use of the city logo tax does not go through the Board of Equalization. So, that money comes directly back to the city and those numbers in years five and six, they, they get very, very substantial up to and including, you know, a, a solid third of the city's current budget. Uh, because when you start looking at a, at a use per, at a rate usage of the logo and, and perhaps Ryan can speak to this a little bit, it's a very unique taxation structure that not many communities have the ability to utilize and it is one that, quite frankly, as a business affects our bottom line slightly less than a gross receipts tax, but because it doesn't go through the BOE, it's a much, much more beneficial to the municipality or the jurisdiction. So, I hope that answered that question, but yeah, there.
So, uh, my other question has to do with, you had mentioned conservatively, I believe, 250 jobs, if I'm not misspeaking.
Yeah.
Um, what kind of jobs do those entail? Is this in, in the, like nursery cultivation, is manufacturing, is this retail or a combination?
All of the above. And quite frankly, as you know, once you get into those sorts of numbers of employees, you have a rather robust HR department and accounting department and we're going to have truck drivers and we're going to have quality control people. And I mean, when you start to look at all the subcategories of employment, there is a large chunk of those will be garden techs, for lack of a better word, people that are in charge of making sure the plants are growing healthily. But a fair few of them will be machine techs for the manufacturing. There'll be some artisanal manufacturing that are more like skilled labor jobs. And then, you know, yeah, once you start to, you know, once you start to push 100, 150 employees, you've got 20 to 25 just in HR and accounting. And so, like those numbers start to stack on top of each other and it doesn't take long to get there.
So, you say 250 conservatively. So, I mean, obviously, we're not going into details on different plans, but how, how, what's the timeframe? How rapidly, uh, i- if, you know, things progress, that you would envision these kinds of jobs, uh, launching in weed?
So, our, our business plan and, and the financial projections therein have a mechanism by which we induce what in the finance world they call hockey stick growth, right? Basically, to tie into federal deregulation of cannabis. So, we are not looking to build out this infrastructure in the next year or two. We are looking to grow slowly and be ready to build out when we have surety that we can ship Northern California cannabis to other states, which is an inevitability in the years to come. So, the fact of the matter is, there is a pent-up demand on the nationwide market, particularly in prohibition states, for Northern California cannabis. And we are putting ourselves in a position to build out a supply chain operation capable of meeting that demand and in doing so garner a higher price per unit, which reflects back on the use of the logo, reflects back on the gross receipts tax and reflects back on the geographic indicator or the appellation. We're in no rush to build this out, quite frankly. The way things are right now, you know, most industry watchers think, and I tend to agree, that the initial period where we'll be able to ship things to say Massachusetts or Pennsylvania or these states that do have adult-use regulations, it's going to be very similar to shipping a firearm, right? So, you can buy a firearm from Alabama in Idaho and as long as the seller and the buyer have their right permits, it goes through a bunch of states where that firearm is now legal. And so, that model is probably what's going to end up happening with cannabis in the immediacy prior to full federal deregulation. And once full federal deregulation happens, we want to be prepared for a nationwide brand launch and to build out the supply chain slowly and to make sure that our SOPs are what they need to be, to make sure that our quality controls are what they need to be. We're, we, in fact, I think on your maps, it says the first buildings that we start at, we're really just trying to start out at approximately 40,000 square foot, including the nursery for genetics development. And then, in our plans, we basically build one greenhouse out every six to eight months and then whenever we know federal deregulation happens, we hit the gas, so to speak. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
What you, just so I know, because I do give a look here and so what you're telling me is you want to start growing the cannabis before you have the investors to put in the rest of stuff?
No, so, we're going to be able to, and we have some offers on construction, more traditional construction financing loans. Um, one of the things that's, we're really excited about is it looks almost certain that the SAFE Act, the Cannabis Banking Act for state-regulated cannabis businesses is going to be as part of this second stimulus bill that's coming up in the fall. So, when that happens, we'll be able to go to actually banks and I have had some, uh, preliminary conversations with some credit unions, including our local one and, and with some banks in the area. But w- once we take down the land, once we finalize the acquisition of the land, um, then we'll basically be able to just get a traditional collateralized construction loan. And so, you know, that's not an investment per se, it won't be an equity sale, you know, it won't be anything like that. It'll just be a, a debt mechanism to build out against the business model.
Okay.
I understand what you're doing.
Yeah, no.
You're trying, you're going to count on the, on the state money, build a business if you don't have the funds to build right now, which I always have done.
Brian, Brian, bear in mind.
No, no, I get it.
Excuse me, Brian, bear in mind, this meeting is to decide on the development agreement and not all the minutia and legality that's coming down the pipe.
This meeting is decided as what we're developing over on South Weed is compared to what the South Weed and the weed people need. See, we're not here for us. We're here, we want.
We're here to listen to all these other people in the audience too. And we need, we need to give them a chance, okay? Thank you.
One thing that I think that, that Ray would, it would benefit the group to hear about is the idea of an appellation concept. I was not aware of these and it's something that you do apply for through the Business and Professions Code and it really does kind of adds, enhances this idea a little bit for the region, if you ask me. Ray, what, what exactly is an appellation?
Sure, so, an appellation is a type of geographic indicator. It's actually a internationally codified mechanism that the United States is party to as part of a 1994 international trade treaty called the Lisbon Agreement. It, um, speaks to place of origin and by virtue of place of origin, the inputs that are unique to that region that create what's called a causal link between soil, water, topography, aridity, so climate, and, and standards and practices and the localized genetics that we have. And again, utilizing the nursery permit to develop those genetics, all of those combined into basically a, a packet of submittal, uh, for a ge- again, geographic indicator of which an appellation is one subcategory of. But basically, it's, you can only, you don't, you know, people have joked about it for years and they sell T-shirts about it at multiple stores, you know, weed, weed from weed. And you could only claim that if you were within the confines of that geographic indicator, which are primarily based on topography and climate, but under the, s- under the clause in the development agreement also has to do with the use of the city logo. So, there's not really a ubiquitous or universally acknowledged beacon to connoisseur consumers, right? There's a lot of, it's a very crowded marketplace, there's not a lot of high-quality product available because of the licensing structure is still catching up with the supply chain and with the consumer demand. And so, the development of a logo or a seal or a nomenclature, whatever you want to call it, that consumers can readily identify as that's a good product. You know, just like a bottle of wine or, or coffee or, you know, or craft beer, right? Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Champagne, Parmesan cheese.
Yeah, I know, precisely. Those are the really traditional, you know, macro examples that have been around since the 1500s.
Right.
Which is where the concept came from, you know. But it does, as, as City Planner McKinley mentioned, the use of that and, and the inclusion of that into the broader project development by way of marketing what we know we can grow incredibly high-quality organic cannabis. And to attach an easily identifiable consumer mark to what we already know to be a superior product, that's how you garner customer loyalty. And that's really what this is about, right? It's about people in Arkansas or Pennsylvania or Ohio saying, man, this, this cannabis from weed, man, that's good stuff.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Um, I mean, I, I, I'd like to thank City Planner McKinley for a really excellent staff report. This does a great job of explaining it. I know that you guys have a copy of the actual development agreement itself, which.
That's too great.
Awesome. It's, it's a pretty dense document. It was actually a lot more dense until Ryan got a hold of it, because Ron had made us put a bunch of stuff in there that really was a little redundant. But I got to say, without, without Ron and without his understanding of the vision, I don't think we'd be where we are today. So I do want to thank him for that if he's watching or, you know, he's around. But yeah, I think this is probably a good point where Mr. Reed can chime in. Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what the order is, sorry.
Well, when you are finished, we will go to public comment.
If there are no more questions, I mean, I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of explaining what the project is. I think it is worth noting, and I, I know that Ryan's going to speak.
Donna?
I'm Donna Winger, and I sat up there when the project was, the, the design project. This isn't Ray's first rodeo. And I was impressed when we were hearing what he had planned and what he had, the vision he had, and who, the type of people he has around him. He obviously has a, a posse with him that are experts also in this. And I have utmost faith that he is not going to screw this up. And I would, I want him to have, he and, and the whole crew to have the ability to have an agreement and have what he, they need to have to go further. There'll be a time and a place for someone to say, no, that's not going to work, but it's not now. All, all you all are talking about is approving the, the agreement that I believe they have, you know, a right to have. And I, again, whenever he is involved in anything, it's thorough, it's done well. And I have the utmost faith in him and how much it means to all of the people involved to do it correctly and to not screw it up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Sean Vanderjack?
Hello. My name is Sean Vanderjack. I'm Vice President of Local Lodge W-12. We represent the 120 employees at Roseburg. International Paper left weed about 26 years ago, and this town never really fully recovered. There are, I believe, four buildings on Roseburg's property. We utilized one of them. You know, can you imagine what this town will be like if that mill just packs up and leaves? It's probably going to happen one day. You know, what's going to happen to the schools? What's going to happen to these small businesses? We cannot rely off hotels and a McDonald's and a Panda Express. You can't raise a family on that. Those jobs are minimum wage, they're part-time, everybody, people that work there own welfare. You know, I think it's atrocious to say that we're going to turn down 200 to 250, $20 an hour jobs because it bothers McDonald's. That's, it's, that's disgusting. You know, rent, about, before the bull's fire, rent was about $750, $800 for a three-bedroom house. I pay 1,400 for a three-bedroom house now. But we got a grocery outlet, that's great. You know, where are the jobs? We're just driving people out, and we're not building anything. You know, if something happens to that mill, I don't want to move away. And it's sad that rent is cheaper in Medford than it is in Weed, California. But there's jobs in Medford and there's no jobs here. You know, we're never going to be a tourist town. We don't have anything. We have a cool name, that's it. There's no lake, we're not Mount Shasta. You can dream about that, it's not going to happen. We need industry. If we don't have industry, we are one economic disaster away from being Doris. No one wants to be Doris. I mean, come on. We need to do something. And I'm sorry, Tractor Supply, that's still minimum wage.
I'm sorry.
I can't, I cannot feed a family on a minimum wage job. I make $21 an hour, I have great health insurance. Something happens, I need somewhere else to go. I don't want to leave. I've been here since I was 16 years old, I graduated high school here. There needs to be more than just Roseburg, because if we put all our eggs in that basket, that basket's going to fall, those eggs are going to break eventually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Burlinger? Would you like to speak? He gave a card.
Hi, I'm Bruce Burlinger. I'm the owner of the McCloud Mill. Today was, got approval for a 20-acre use permit for a solar farm on the mill. And we've been repurposing that, that property. I know Raymond, because Raymond approached us to do his project perhaps out by us, and we would gladly had him, had his project out by us. And, but we're in the county, not, not a city, we're service district. And so the county has decided that cities are determining their, their uses. And so I, I know Raymond, I think Raymond has a, has a nice business model. I find him to be a very straightforward and, and upfront of individual who has, I think, the best interest in mind for the community. And I think this project has merits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Beck?
Hi, my name is Paul Beck. I'm a local area resident for 45 years now. I also serve on a planning commission for a local municipality also. I've known Ray for approximately eight years. We traveled to Sacramento together to speak before the State Assembly. And we really tried really, really hard to get our county to be open to considering this industry. And we were, obviously weren't successful. We spent a lot of time going up to many Board of Supervisors meetings. And anyway, moving past that, I just want to address how we did things through our planning. First of all, I would never presume to tell you what to do. You guys are all longtime residents, you know what your town needs, and you're doing a great job. I'll tell you how we approached it. I happened to, myself, be on the committee that drafted the ordinances. And so we decided to take a conservative approach and not try to start out too big, too fast. When we put our proposal forward to the City Council, they wound, they thought we were too conservative and actually upped it probably approximately 25 to 30% of what we thought we should start at. I think it's a great business for the area, I think it's a great opportunity for you guys. I understand all the concerns out there with regard to the smell. We only had one complaint once, and that was mitigated to the satisfaction of both the complainter, and the complainte, is that correct? Anyway, so what I wanted to say was, we decided we were going to start with 15 licenses. City Council decided it would be okay to start with 25 with, in five categories each. So moral of the story is, you never want to grow a business bigger and faster than you can keep an eye on. That's my opinion as a planning commissioner, because I love my town, and I, I want to be open to growth and intelligent growth. But I never want to sacrifice the integrity of my community for a dollar bill, ever. So moral of the story, I'll just cut it short here, is that if you go in increments, you're, you're not talking about going from zero to 200 miles an hour in one year. This is something that you're going to grow over three to five years. And in that time, you can gauge where your stopping point should be. And you can always put certain conditions on the growth. If certain things happen, then it's either you undo it or you stop right there. So as, as long as you're conservative and just exercise good judgment and grow intelligently, I think you'll find out that this is a really fine industry, and it'll work out really well and be very profitable for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry if I mispronounced this, is it Lauren? Lauren, okay.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Adams. I'm a resident of Weed now for about a year, moved here last June. So I didn't really have time to prepare anything I, I learned about this meeting tonight. So, so what I'd like to share is that I'm, I'm an advocate for anything that is going to produce jobs for our community, as well as burgeoning other jobs, you know what I mean? So we could employ some people, give them really decent wages, and, and allow them to kind of burgeoning out, like I said, and, and give us what their part of our community is back to us. You know, open their own businesses and, and be able to support their families comfortably and stuff like that. But I'm not the best speaker, I'm just here trying to give my two cents in. And I appreciate you guys, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we did have a phone call earlier today from Rita Edder. She lives in Seattle. She was born and raised in Weed. She owns property adjacent to the proposed development agreement site. Her, her concerns are that she would not be able to sell her property, and her property value would drop because of this type of business. She stated she does not want this type of business in Weed, and she feels that more big-box business would be better in South Weed.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? That's it?
Um.
Yes.
Build up one or two comments that were made there that I realized I did kind of overlook. Sean's comments about living wage jobs are the real, real sentiment of the day. And I think that Ms. Rita Edder's comments are really slightly tone deaf, because big-box jobs lead to more people, lead to increased government spending. What we are talking about are living wage manufacturing jobs that have not only the ability to bring revenue to our town, but for people to live on in a comfortable way. And I think that, you know, putting more fast food in or putting more, while these are absolutely vital industries, and there are people who need those jobs, whether to augment or whether they're starting out young in life. I, I worked at a pizza place when I was 16, you know, like everybody starts somewhere. And, or 17, excuse me, but the, what I really want to focus on is, yeah, the fact that we are obliged, in this development agreement, our minimum wage is $20 an hour. So that's just for piecemeal or hourly work. I mean, for any sort of salaried position, you are talking about 50, 60, 70 plus, and the, and the really high-level positions, we're going to be bringing in organic chemists and botanists and, and people that are pulling six-figure salaries and spending money in local restaurants. And quite frankly, probably opening up side businesses with their spouses or what have you. Because this is a real engine for economic development, this isn't just more Dollar General stores, which I, you know, I shop there too, of course, right? The fact of the matter is that the people that work at Dollar General have trouble meeting ends meet, and, and the jobs that we're providing here, they will not. And that's, you know, that, to me, that, I don't know how I glossed over that when I initially spoke, so I apologize. But Sean's absolutely correct. And then in, just in reference to Mr. Beck's comments, he's absolutely right, that, that growth over time, that incremental deployment of facilities is absolutely integral. And I think, as you know, in the development agreement, it is very clear that the city maintains oversight, not only over the submittal of engineering plans and of the development of the site over time, but by law through the annual review, the two-party review, which does culminate in another public hearing. So if after a year of operations, there are people that have complaints about the smells, that is the venue, then they can bring them up, and we can have a discussion about, okay, well, how could we further mitigate that, or how could we? You know, so the, the, the idea behind a development agreement is that it creates a conversation between a developer and a municipality that allows for, for, for candor in dialogue, right? I mean, like, you know. And so I, I really just think that, yeah, we're not trying to build that out the gate, we're trying to build this up to be a sustainable business, to provide living wage jobs to the community, and I just really wanted to make that extraordinarily clear. No, you're good, man. That's, that's pretty messed up, man.
I wouldn't sell my own property to make more money than I've ever seen in my life. And I know the people that are across the street.
Wouldn't appreciate it.
I know the other people that have the trailer park on their side of me, and I know it smells like I did my homework.
Even if it were indoor?
This gentleman sitting over there, I know he's not allowed to talk, what he works is, was there once, when they got me when they weren't supposed to fly.
Can Craig, Craig, yeah.
I wouldn't own it on my own, it's toxic, it's like this, I don't think what you're doing is going to work. I believe the cannabis industry is a, is a free enterprise system, and I talk, and it's going to be somewhere. It doesn't belong, it doesn't belong by Motel 6 where I am, and it does not belong by the golf course where I am. It doesn't belong with.
I, and I think the reality of the situation is, is that that's a viewpoint based upon your exposure to the industry as it stands. And I think that what we're here to debate discuss is whether or not it's appropriate under the zoning code in the commercial zone, or the commercial industrial zone that we're discussing. And, you know, that's. Yeah. So, okay, sorry, that is all. Any other questions?
Um, was, you're, Ryan, were you going to speak? Oh, okay. Did we have any kind of staff response for any of this? No, no.
No, I, I've pretty much went through the staff report, and I only went through little bits of it, so.
So at this point, I will declare the public hearing closed. The planning commission will discuss things as needed, but we will not take any commentary from the public at this point. Thank you. Did you want to speak?
I think that Keith and the applicant have made most of the points, and I guess I can just summarize really quickly, and then if you all have any questions, since I assisted with drafting the agreement, happy to help. I think it's useful probably to go through just the timeline of what this would look like if the, the development agreement was approved, you know, recommended for approval here, going to the council, treat it as a normal ordinance where they hold a public hearing, have a second hearing to, a second reading to formally adopt it, and then it is in effect 30 days thereafter. At that point, the agreement doesn't become effective until they actually exercise their option to purchase the land, and they have under this agreement 12 months to do so. So if they don't do it within 12 months, the city has the right to terminate the agreement as, effectively. The, the reason for that is there is an obligation under state law that they own the land when we enter into this agreement. At 12 months, or rather, when they sign the, when they own the land and the agreement becomes effective, then the laws that we have in effect as far as the uses, the proposed uses of the land, so these various types of cannabis, cultivation, nursery, the like, those, the laws that we have in effect at the time of the, that the agreement becomes effective are frozen. So then we can't, you know, after they have done all this work or they start their process, we can't say, never mind, we've decided that we don't want to have cannabis at all in the city, and you can't do it. This has happened before, I've worked on several cases where, and to be clear, I solely represent cities and not developers, so this is from the city's perspective, but several situations where cities have decided to allow cannabis, cannabis growers have invested substantial amounts into the land, into their projects, and then the city decides, never mind, we don't want to do that anymore. These agreements are really meant to provide assurances that the city won't change its mind. That allows them to put the investments, to get the investments into place, and to put investments into developing the actual site plan that they're looking at. That site plan and this, this plan for how the land will actually be developed will go before you again as a plan unit development rezone. That would be an opportunity for the planning commission to recommend conditions of approval that will also be when Sequel will be required. So they will not, they will not be allowed to do any sort of development, any boots on the ground until Sequel analysis occurs. And then once the plan unit development rezone is approved with any conditions that we apply, and assuming that it is approved, then they have the right to develop the land pursuant to that plan unit development rezoning. So it's really a several-step process intended, and as the applicant has alluded to, intended to make sure that there are assurances in place before they continue on to the next phases. And any amendments to this agreement will require the council, because it is an ordinance and an agreement, they will need to go through a public hearing process to make any amendments. So we can't kind of start to make changes to this without going through more public process. So with that, any questions?
I'm good.
Would they, I mean.
On that roster you want to pass, they cannot, it's tied up for a certain amount of time for the city and these people.
Well, I mean, so they have, they would have the right for the year upon their, or it's, not a year, rather, but they would have the right if they, once they own the land, to develop it for, to use it for the purposes that we've discussed, the nursery, the cannabis uses. If they sold the land or they leased it to somebody who wanted to build something else, they can do that. There's no, this isn't, the land is not limited to. to cannabis use in any way. It's just they're allowed, they're making sure that they're allowed to use it for cannabis. Yeah. Yeah, so, so that
This is going on for five years?
Well, to clarify that, so the year is, they have a year to purchase the land, and then after that, they have two years to submit the plan unit development application. If the city council can always amend the terms of the agreement, just like the city council could decide to enter into a new agreement, it would have to go through a public hearing process to do so. So, yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, the answer is yes, they could amend it, but they would have to go through a public process. I'm special counsel for the City of Weed. I work for, oh, thank you very much. Yeah, I lived down in Grass Valley, so.
I'm a lousy talker.
It's no problem at all. Planning commission, so, you know, it's good, it's good to get some, everybody's perspective on these things. Okay?
One more silly question.
Yeah, no silly question.
Let's say somebody went up to bed and walked up, which will happen. They don't want the project, they bought, they bought it. Then a walk-in property is a section, a small section going, let's just say somebody out of the blue called them up, just bought the property. Would they have to go through this whole thing again, to redo it again, if somebody bought the other piece of property as part of it?
Do, what's the other, I'm sorry, you're going to have to clarify the pieces of property. So, they have a, they have an option to purchase this property, so, assuming they exercise that option to purchase, it's theirs. If they don't exercise it, then, within this timeframe
Everybody's looking at me like they're expecting me to speak well. So, this is true, this is true. Well, I don't want to take too much of everyone's time. I'm actually kind of shocked that we didn't have more public, you know, support or proponents, proponents or opponents from the public, and that the only, you know, only one to speak against this was somebody who lives in Seattle that's not a part of our community outside of owning property. That was interesting. So, I'm kind of looking at this from the standpoint of any proposed development going forward for cannabis, or any other use of the property, requires all of the overwhelming burdens of the state, the county, and the city, including and not excluding the EIR and planning commission and city council review. And so, I'm kind of looking at this from the standpoint of a property rights issue. So, if I was a teddy bear manufacturer, and I wanted to have, you know, assurances for my investors in building my teddy bear manufacturing facilities on this land, would we be having the same discussion as a planning commission? You know, now, regardless of our opinions, personal, professional, otherwise for or against cannabis usage, this, what we're deciding right now is about this, moving this on to the city council for discussion, and, you know, to be approved or denied. And so, the decision we make here is not granting, you know, any, any building or any development of cannabis industry. This is just simply saying that, should the city council approve this, that this, this, this company could come forward and make future requests to make these developments. And so, I don't want to get in the weeds about, you know, my opinions, or, you know, the, you know, hypotheticals, because we're not at that stage yet. And so, I'm finding it really difficult to say no on this, because there is no, there's no dog in the fight for, for the fellow citizens in this, myself included, as a property owner and as a resident and a parent here, that any negative externality is going to befall our city.
We had a vote in City of Weed, and the people of Weed, on cannabis coming into Weed, and the people voted not to bring it in. It's kind of our job to do what the people want. We kind of work for the people, don't we? And when they vote, they don't want it here, and we go ahead and override, and even our city council, you won't be putting up with me here much longer. I'll be running for city council. I'm going, I'm going to budget. I'm going to try, both of you go with me, and this gentleman. Weed are here for the people of Weed, and they voted, they didn't want marijuana in Weed. It's simple, you say there's nobody to argue it. They said no a while back. We voted on it, and they said no. Am I mistaken? That's what they called, they changed it to an advisory vote. The City of Weed people said no. The people that live here said no.
But I don't So, and I understand that. I'm also looking at it from, from, again, the rights of all people, not just the majority. And none of these people have come here, and this is why I say, my first statement, I was, I was, I was shocked and surprised there was no opponents visible here tonight, that, you know, to, to, you know, if we had a vote in the past, that the city, you know, those who voted decided they didn't want this, but yet, none of them showed up today for this hearing.
If you voted to stop something in Weed, and you went to city council, voted against it, and the city council said, ah, no, we don't care, I disagree with, would you not lose faith in your city?
Yeah, if, if something were to occur with the city council, the planning commission, or any other regulatory body in the city that I was vehemently opposed to, I would be organizing and, you know, and dealing with that.
Did we not have a city vote? And the people of the city Ninety percent said no? So, they aren't, that's your opposition. So, if you want to consider an opposition, it's the people that live here, it's the retired people, the people who say they're going to serve, the schools, the kids, the parents, they're the ones that said they didn't want it. There's your opposition.
Okay. I Yes, you may.
I think it's really important to note that that vote was about a prior regulatory framework, under two-fifteen, which that vote was about. Under medical dispensaries, under the medical laws prior to AUMA, there were no health and safety protocols, there were no child safety protocols, there were no et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, the vote was on a prior incarnation of regulations. The City of Weed did vote in favor of the AUMA, in favor of adult-use legalization, as did the County of Siskiyou.
As long as it wasn't processed here?
I don't, that, sir, that vote was that vote was specifically on medical dispensaries, and that is not what we are here to discuss. That was on a prior regulatory framework that lacked Yeah, you're, I get it, but I'm just
We did the vote, and the vote actually read, do we want cannabis? They put marijuana grown in Weed, and the people of Weed
And this was something that is no longer
Right.
germane to this issue. That vote was for something else in, almost entirely, it's as Ray has said.
That would have allowed, if that had passed, that would have allowed large-scale, unregulated medical grows within residential areas of the city. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a business in an industrial zone. And I think that's a really, really extraordinarily important dichotomy to harbor. I mean, that's just Yeah, so that's Right. So, I, and I, and to be honest with you, as someone who, who, who has friends in Weed, who had been growing and then didn't, and changed their practices as a result of that vote, I think that it's, it's very clear that that vote was about, do we want to allow people to have twenty-four or forty-eight plants in their backyard in Stringtown? And that's totally different than this. And so, I just really want to make that
And I also see a lot less fear in this town, since we've gotten some dispensaries. People see that it's not the issue they thought it would be. Things have changed since then, and we have to move with the flow. We happen to live in a town called Weed, and we're also pro-business. We are trying to grow this town. It's inevitable that we are going to be, have marijuana cannabis industry in this town. It's already happened. It's already on our main street. We have approved grows. We have approved a lot of facilities already. Now, what I'm seeing, let me Let me continue. Okay. I see this whole resolution, okay, Ray's people have put an incredible amount of time and energy into developing this. They are, have, they're ambitious, they have vision. What we've got up to this point are mom-and-pop shops. That's not going to grow this town. It's not going to bring in good-wage jobs. It's not going to bring in retail. They have a vision that could actually bring us something besides Motel Six and thrift stores, okay? South Weed is stuck. It's not changing, and it needs to. We need to have, we need to be able, okay, we need to gentrify it a bit, so that we can become a destination town instead of a place to gas up and move on. We don't even have restaurants to, we have, there's so few at this point. There's no choices. What I see here is, we're not making a decision whether we're going to approve this business or not. This is coming down the pipe. We're giving these, them, the chance to develop something that could be really, really good for everyone in this town. And I just don't see the fear of the, of cannabis use and commercialization of it that I saw five years ago. I'm not seeing it. It's changed. Things changed. They move on. So, for us to not at least give them a chance to show us what they can do, I think is a huge mistake. That's my opinion. And their mom-and-pop shops that aren't going to grow, they're not going to bring different, kind of, different businesses in. They're not going to bring the chance for retail or restaurants. And they're offering us something here that we desperately need. That's my opinion. Okay. Are we, are we ready to vote for this, on this? Would anyone like to make a motion, or do you want me to?
So, I will make a motion to adopt resolution number zero-one-dash-two-zero-two-zero, that this move forward for the consideration of the city council.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All those opposed, say nay. Are you, did you, did you vote?
I did.
You said nay?
Yeah, I voted aye.
The recommendation is three to two, and is denied.
Yeah, we're going to forward the recommendation on to city council, that the planning commission recommended not approving the resolution. August of next month, next month's meeting, the third Wednesday, second Thursday.
And we're only allowed to bring fifteen people in here?
I have no idea.
So, if somebody showed up with Motel owners, the restaurant owners, and ads, and stuff, they actually would
I really don't know.
We'd have to, we'd have to bring them in.
With that, I will, excuse me? We have an approval of last meeting's minutes. Do we have any commissioners' reports from anyone? We've already done staff reports. I make a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Yeah.
Big mistake. Big mistake.